I've got exactly six o'clock on my phone, so, and I know that Chair Hall won't be here this evening. So I think we got everybody right.
Fine. Alright, so go ahead and call the Cape Carteret Planning Board meeting to order. So like Frank mentioned, Susan wasn't feeling well, and Bruce was our vice chair. So Susan called me up to help, so in the future, we'll have to elect a vice chair as well. But I do want to thank Bruce for his time on the board. I don't know if he's listening online, but we're gonna send them some cards to say thank you since we missed his last meeting. But we do want to welcome Don to the board.
Thank you.
So welcome aboard. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Oh, my name is Don Whelan. I live at 218 Sardill Drive. I've been here since 2016. I am the proud owner, operator, treasurer, secretary, and janitor of Smalls, Raisin, Hall. It's me, myself, and I. And after Jeff Waters asked me if I would maybe want to come help out with the town since I'm involved in it in other ways, I said I would be glad to if I was elected to be. I did somehow.
Yeah. Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from back from January. So did everyone have a chance to look those over?
Yes.
Yes, except for the correction. Let me look at the correction. Yes.
Any other corrections or anything to add to January? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Right, and all in favor? Hopefully, hopefully I'll get the hang of that. Bye. Okay, next is public comment. So ma'am, I think we have an official sign up sheet, but is there anything you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you for being here.
Well, Don Marskey is late.
That's true. Where's Don?
She should be here.
She should. Okay, the number four is kind of our big ticket item here, talking about the stormwater ordinance. So Frank, I'll let you, we've been discussing, but I don't know if you want to break it up. I feel like you kind of have those three categories. So the state stormwater permit, and then the commercial and big residential. And residential, so do you want to kind of break it up?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll walk you through it and certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. And hopefully, I did a reasonably decent job of explaining it in the written materials. But I'll sort of talk you through the basic thought behind it. As we talked about at your last meeting in January, I informed the planning board that I had some concerns with our existing stormwater management ordinance and that one of my goals was to improve it and just make it clearer for people going forward. I also understand that there's certainly community concerns about stormwater in general, particularly when we have significant rainfall events or hurricane events. And so this is aimed really at two goals. One is to provide more consistency and clarity and predictability in our ordinance, both for applicants, owners, developers, and also for residents in the community, and then certainly for staff or planning board members or board of commissioners tasked with implementing these ordinances. And then second, as I'll talk about in a minute, there's a new requirement for single-family homes for stormwater management as well. And I suspect that'll probably be the most significant piece of the discussion here tonight and look forward to your comments and thoughts on that. But essentially, we have three sections in our ordinance now that deal with stormwater management. And I've summarized those in the written materials. This is also the same summary that was in the previous memo to you in January as well. Perhaps the most concerning provision in the existing ordinance for me is in section 1217 and section 1218. So in section 1217, it simply says you can't let your stormwater leave your property and run out into the street or run in, run out into a neighbor's property. And so that's a great thought and certainly well-intentioned and a noble goal, but very impractical and difficult to apply in any consistent and fair practical manner. So I'm hoping to address that and come up with something to replace that. And then section 1218 is troubling to me because it essentially says that you are a single-family home. You don't need a stormwater permit unless the town manager or the zoning administrator says you need one. And it's, it basically creates a situation where it's not predictable. It's not necessarily applied consistently. And folks that don't know whether or not it applies to them or not, and quite frankly, I just don't want myself or any town employee to be in the position of making that judgment on a subjective basis. It essentially says if you think there might be a problem, the town manager or the development administrator, zoning administrator, can make you get an engineer, can make you put in other improvements. And again, well-intentioned, noble goal, but it's already caused some concerns in some of the projects that I've been working on with people in Cape Carteret and leads to some hard feelings. And so at the end of the day, as I've shared with you all before, I'm trying to create a system that is effective at achieving our goals for the community, but that also builds goodwill and builds confidence and trust. And so that's part of the reason for the proposed amendments that you have before you tonight. In section 1216 that we already have, I think that's pretty clear. And essentially what I've done is added new provisions to section 1216 to accomplish what I think the goals are under 1217 and 1218. Now I'll walk you through those in just a minute. So as Sarah alluded to, most larger projects in Cape Carteret, just because of our location, are going to require a state stormwater permit. And so if the project does require a state stormwater permit, most likely the applicant, and I'm talking large commercial projects, large residential subdivisions, most likely the applicant is going to have to manage stormwater runoff associated with the one-year 24-hour storm. In our area, that's typically about a 3.7-inch rainfall event. And there are other requirements that the state requires them to incorporate. Those projects have to be designed by a licensed stormwater engineer. It's pretty common. Most folks are pretty accustomed to that in the coastal area. If it, the other situation for state stormwater permits is they may only be required to comply with a 1.5-inch rainfall event for their stormwater management system and depends on where they're located, where it drains to. Essentially, if it's not draining directly to the coastal waters and it meets the thresholds, it's the 1.5-inch requirement. Most people wind up with the one-year 24-hour storm, the 3.7-inch requirement. And so the ordinance that you have before you tonight, it essentially says really three things. One is in the town of Cape Carteret, if you are required to have a state stormwater permit, that's all the town of Cape Carteret's going to require from you. And that's going to be larger commercial projects, larger residential projects, subdivisions that involve new roads, et cetera, et cetera. In practical terms, those will probably only happen in the triangle area for the most part. There's a couple other larger parcels where you could potentially see something like that happen, but mostly it's the larger vacant tracts in the triangle area that will have development that's significant enough to generate a, the need for a state stormwater permit. So our ordinance is simple in that sense, and this is in the current ordinance. If you need a state permit, we're going to accept a state permit. What our ordinance currently says and what the new version says is that those projects that would only require a one and a half, a stormwater system based on a one and a half-inch rainfall event, the town of Cape Carteret requires that to be designed for a two-inch rainfall event. So essentially, what the town's ordinance says is you got to meet all the state requirements, but instead of 1.5 inches, we want you to meet two inches. That's, I think, a reasonable provision for the town to have. That is maintained in the current, in the proposed ordinance that's presented for you tonight. So that's the first thing. Need a state permit? We're going to accept a state permit. We might want you to do two inches instead of 1.5 inches, but otherwise, you're good to go if you have the state permit. What the proposed ordinance says is that if there are any other commercial, industrial, large-scale residential subdivisions in the community, institutional projects, maybe it's a town facility, a town hall, something like that, the town requires a two-inch rain, you design the system to store and infiltrate a two-inch rainfall event. So all of the runoff generated from an impervious surface, generally up to 10,000 square feet, you would have to take the two-inch rainfall event, multiply by the impervious surface, have enough storage area on the site for that stormwater to accumulate and ultimately infiltrate into the ground. And so it's really a simplified requirement, similar to the state requirements, similar to what some other communities use. And in the case of Cape Carteret, it would really only come into play mostly for projects that have less than 10,000 square feet of impervious coverage. So anything beyond that's going to trigger a state stormwater permit. We may have some small-scale commercial, maybe some small-scale residential subdivisions that this ordinance requirement would be triggered. And so what our proposed ordinance says is that, and this is also in the current ordinance, is that it needs to be designed by a design professional, a licensed professional engineer. And they're commonly completing this kind of work, and it's pretty standard practice. So I think it probably would be used relatively infrequently, but it's a mechanism that's there for something that doesn't quite trigger the state permit, but is maybe a little bit more impactful in the community in terms of stormwater management. And at the end of the day, it's actually pretty simple math. I mean, all you're doing is you're taking the impervious coverage, you're multiplying it by 0.166. You're calculating what that volume is, and you're designing storage areas to accommodate that number of cubic feet. And the example that I gave in the memo, if it had 8,000 square feet of impervious coverage, it'd have to store and infiltrate 1,333 cubic feet and then infiltrate that water on the property. And the example that I gave, if you had a basin on the surface that was 50 feet by 15 by two feet, that would store 1,500 cubic feet. They could probably accomplish that relatively easily. Lots of folks do things like that. So that's the second requirement that's proposed in the ordinance. The third one is the one I think probably deserves the most discussion, and it's a new requirement in Cape Carteret and something that you all should certainly discuss and express your thoughts and opinions on. I told you that I didn't like the subjective or inconsistent nature of those two other sections of the ordinance, 1217 and 1218. This is really written to try to achieve what I think the intent and the goals are of those two sections. And so basically, what it says is anybody building a single-family home in Cape Carteret, you've got to go through a very simple calculation, and you have to store and infiltrate the runoff generated from a one-and-a-half-inch rainfall event. So it's that one-and-a-half-inch requirement that is consistent with the lower standard for state stormwater permits. However, this ordinance would not require a licensed engineer to design that. It could be the person's general contractor. It could be their landscaping professional. It could be the owner themselves. And again, it's pretty much simple math. There's nothing too complicated about it. And in the example that I included in here, if you have a 4,000 square feet of impervious coverage on a single-family lot, and for discussion purposes, that's a 2,000 square footprint. Many homes aren't even that large in terms of the footprint, particularly multiple stories. 100-foot long, 12-foot driveway, 20 by 40 parking space. That basically comes out to 500 cubic feet of storage. And so the intent behind this ordinance is that the owner or the general contractor, or maybe their landscaping professional, would simply design surface infiltration basins, maybe into the landscaping features in the community. Maybe you have an existing low spot on the property that would just simply, the water would be directed from the downspouts or the driveway would be tilted in such a way so that the water would accumulate in the low spots on your lot and for that storm event, wouldn't get on anybody else's property, wouldn't make its way out onto the street, theoretically wouldn't cause a problem. I give that example because you hear a lot of talk about low-impact development, and that's kind of a, a popular term, particularly by folks who are environmentally conscious. That's really all that is, is just infiltrating the water on-site as part of the landscaping, whether it's in a nice bed that has bushes and trees and flowers or whether that's a low spot in the yard. But they call it low-impact development, and it is environmentally friendly, and this is environmentally friendly, but that's really kind of what this is. You could make that basin as boring as you'd like. It could all be sod, or it could be some really pretty plants and flowers and rocks or whatever you want to do in there. The other option here is to infiltrate the runoff underground. There are some commercially available products that will essentially infiltrate, basically perforate a pipe, and it'll have styrofoam or maybe rock around it, and it'll infiltrate into the ground underneath. Commercially available, some costs associated with that generally not too significant. Certainly, the above-ground solutions probably wouldn't add too much expense for any person. The subsurface solutions might wind up with some minor additional expense for that. And so that's, that's what's proposed, basically to replace 1217 and 1218 and make it predictable, make it consistent. It's just something that everyone has to do. That's new. That's different. Some people may not like that, and you should talk about that. It's been done in Emerald Isle for many, many years. I think probably about 15 years, maybe close to 20 years by now. There are some other communities that do that. But as I mentioned to you during your January meeting, I think a couple things for you to think about is, one, is that fair to the people who are building houses now compared to people who have an existing house, right? People who have an existing home weren't required to do anything and therefore didn't have that expense. And now you're putting this on the last 25% or so of the develop, of the potentially developable lots in the town. And that's a reasonable question, and you all should talk about that and think about that. The other question is, does it make that much of a difference, right? If 75% of the residential lots have already been developed and they don't have this requirement, and you put it on the remaining 25%, I guess, is the juice worth the squeeze, so to speak? So, or maybe I said that backwards, is the squeeze worth the juice? Whatever, you know that adage I'm talking about. So both reasonable questions that I hope you all will talk about. Couple of other things that are included in here. Well, actually, let me say one more thing. As you consider whether or not that requirement is truly helpful or truly fair or worth that additional cost and logistical consideration for the property owner, also keep in mind that typically what happens is when someone brings in a lot of filter, neighbors understandably get concerned about that, get upset about that. Sometimes it directly pushes water onto the neighbors. Sometimes it doesn't, but they perceive that it does, and it causes concerns and causes conflict and causes frustration with the local government and so forth. So that's one of the reasons why that new provision might be helpful, even though it would only apply to the remaining 25% of the residential lots in town. So an important thing for you to think about as well. There are a couple of other, I think, pretty simple requirements in here. One is it simply says that you either have to tilt your driveway back downward from where it meets the street right-of-way so that the water does not flow out onto the street, or you can install a driveway grate across the end of the driveway and route it into some infiltration area on the property. Or if there's some other way to achieve the same thing, we would consider that as well. But essentially says, don't have your driveway running into the street. Give it a little bit of a dip. And a lot of, you see a lot of driveways around that have that feature already. Not a big deal, I wouldn't think. The other thing that it says is that, and I think this goes without saying, but if you're, particularly if you're building a larger project, commercial or a larger residential project, you got to make sure that any existing features continue to operate. So when you're designing your driveways for your new commercial business, you're taking into account everything that's already happening in the street. And then finally, the last thing is, this proposed ordinance says that every new single-family lot that's developed automatically requires a 12-inch driveway covert. And so right now, we have that requirement, but it's subjectively applied. And so in examples in the community where there are no existing ditches, and maybe it's just a flat surface, we've not required people to put the driveway covert in because it kind of doesn't make any sense in that application. However, it's not consistent and predictable. It sometimes leads to concerns. And in the future, as we tackle different stormwater problems in neighborhoods, regardless of how small or how large they may be, we may want to add a ditch in some of these areas in the future. And so just to make it clear to everyone, this says that you got to put the 12-inch diameter driveway covert in, in any event going forward. And that may be something that causes concern for people as well, but I wanted to point that out to you all. And again, the overriding goals here are to make it consistent, make it predictable, hopefully be practical and not terribly burdensome on the owner or his or her contractor, and also not make it controversial, quite frankly. So it was put together with all of those goals in mind. I look forward to your discussion of it, and I'm happy to adjust in any way that you all think would better serve the community going forward. I will say that I shared this draft with one of our local engineers. I've not gotten his feedback yet. I'm happy, I'm planning to share it with other engineers and contractors just to make sure people are comfortable with it and publicize it accordingly, either before you all make a final recommendation or certainly, most certainly before it gets to the board of commissioners. So I'll stop right there. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Frank. So what I'd like to do, since Don is new, I mean, we could go around the other way, counterclockwise, so he can give his opinion kind of finally. So like I was saying earlier, I think we, let's break it up, the discussion into those kind of three big chunks. So starting with the state stormwater permit. So he mentioned that two-inch requirement versus the 1.5-inch. So kind of go in above and beyond that state stormwater permit. So Paxton, I'll let you go ahead and start us off.
Well, I see no reason to exceed the state requirement. I mean, they've got dozens of civil engineers on their payroll, and they've worked on their requirements for years, and we're just taking it up. But I think 1.5 inches is plenty, whether we try to incorporate existing homes. And I don't see why, if neighbors can prove that they're being burdened by stormwater from their neighbors, I don't see why we couldn't impose it on existing dwellings. But I think the 1.5 personally is sufficient because that's the state requirement. If, if we don't even have a zoning enforcement officer, and here we're going to pass some really important legislation, and I, I have been asking for this, don't get me wrong. I think it's very important to impose stormwater containment conditions on our properties in town. But my personal opinion is 1.5 is sufficient.
Question, Paxton, and I'm not first in the state regulations, but do they apply the 1.5 to a house on the side of a mountain, just like they apply it to out here?
Well, I don't have a house on a mountain, so I don't know.
I mean, if that's, if that's the global requirement, that kind of seems really strange in a state like ours that ranges from mountains to coastlines because the soil's different, the topography is different, everything's different.
I think that would be a good question for Frank to research and tell us next month.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can tell you, I probably can give you a reasonable answer right now. So anyone in the 20 coastal counties is subject, and that's obviously the Kama County is flat, sandy, generally sandy soils, is subject to the same stormwater rules. The state has other stormwater rules that apply in other areas of the state, and there are different rules for different regions, different types of environments and so forth. I'm not first on what they require in a particular region, but they have different requirements for different regions.
That's helpful.
Good question, yeah. Good question.
So what was it that caused us to propose or you to come up with two versus 1.5?
So I did not come up with the two. The two was, was in the, is in the existing ordinance right now. And I can only surmise that whenever the town adopted that ordinance initially, they just wanted to go a little bit above and beyond the state requirement. And so if this board believes 1.5 is sufficient, I'm certainly comfortable with that. If this board wants to maintain the two-in standard, I'm comfortable with that also. But I think the town just wanted to go a little bit above and beyond.
Makes sense. Yeah, I understand where they were coming from on that.
When was that adopted, Frank?
I can't answer that with any authority. I could find out, but I don't know off the top of my head.
With regards to imposing it on existing properties, Paxton, you mentioned like if there was a neighbor that could prove that their neighbor was, had a, was exceeding that requirement, then they could impose that on them through the town, correct?
I was asking for that.
Okay, okay. How would that be done?
I don't know, but I have seen truck after truck after truck hauling in dirt
Oh, yeah, and mulch.
on properties.
Yes.
And there is no doubt in my mind that that's going to cause runoff.
We've had a citizen come and make that very statement that annually their neighbor produces about three truckloads worth of mulch, and they put it on their property, and then she goes, there's no place for it to go except to my property. So, so how do measurements like that for our engineers and people that are, you know, first in these kinds of things, how do you measure that?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, and hopefully they're helpful. It is, I would not advise placing any of these requirements on existing developments and that it only be prospective going forward. It's, it's very difficult and impractical to make those judgments and apply those requirements. It also winds up being controversial also. I'm sure that you all can consider that. With regard to how we would calculate that, again, it, it's very subjective. It's going to be very difficult to apply that. But yet there are concerns with people bringing a lot of fill onto the properties. And so we can't do, in my mind, we can't do anything about what's already happened, but that's really what the requirement for all single-family homes is for, is to address those issues. Now, one variation that you may want to consider is maybe you only impose that requirement if the person is bringing in more than one foot of fill or two foot of fill or whatever standard you think is significant going forward. Like, for example, in Emerald Isle, that requirement is in place for every single-family lot, and it's a two-inch standard in Emerald Isle. And a contractor or the owner can do the simple calculation himself. But in the Emerald Isle ordinance, what it says is if you bring in more than two feet of fill, you have to have a licensed engineer design the improvements. That essentially, we don't trust the layman to figure it out. We want somebody with a professional certification to do that. So that may be something you want to think about as well. I didn't know if we wanted to get that involved here in Cape Carteret, since this is new. I was very much trying to keep it simple and affordable for people. And so I veered off target on your real question about applying it to existing homes. I would just, I wouldn't advise you to stay away from that. The intent is good, but it's probably fraught with problems.
Yeah, it just seems, I mean, it's the same situation in, you know, homeowners associations where they say, well, Joe has it, you know, and so why can't I have it? Or you made him change something, but you're not making me change something or something like that, you know? So, you know, it's hard. It's a hard one. But no further comments.
And if you think about it too, I mean, there's all sorts of examples of ordinances that haven't been applied to others in the past, and we don't go back and make that person comply now. And so it just, it opens up a big can of worms that I'm not sure any of us, at the end of the day, would really want to deal with.
I wouldn't want it for you. Or you, or any of us, right?
But that does bring up the question about the code enforcement. He mentioned that. It, remind me, is the town planner position going to cover the code enforcement?
Absolutely, yeah. It will do all things, all things UDO, all things development, all things planning board, all things code enforcement, if we can find a good person.
Yeah.
It's a little more challenging, unfortunately, than I would like it to be, so.
Yeah. So going back to something Neil had said about the different requirements. So for the 1.5 for our area, is that more than other areas, I think, is kind of what you were getting at? Or about the same?
No, the 1.5 is consistent across the 20 coastal counties. What is, what would be different for our community compared to some other communities is the application of that requirement for a single-family lot. So Emerald Isle requires that, but there are many communities that don't require anything on a single-family lot, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
But the 1.5 is, is pretty standard.
I think the 1.5 is an easy sell. I think the 1.5 is an easy sell. I think anything above that starts to get controversial, because all you can do is say, hey, look, all we're doing is asking you to comply with what the state says.
Well, yeah, if you think about it, if you do the work that it takes to do 1.5, two's not much more, because you already had to, it's two more scoops, or, you know.
It's not much.
Yeah, it's not much more, but I think, you know, and it's interesting that we see people bring in lots of fill, they still have to hold, according to this ordinance, the required, what we're gonna legislate, amount of water, so why would they bring in this fill, other than, a lot of people on crawl space houses like to put it up just maybe five or six inches, so it doesn't run under the house. And, and that's not necessarily trying to raise it up like, what you're talking about is people obviously intending to get their water on somebody else's lawn.
That's exactly right. Yeah, that's.
That's, that's what that, that was, so. Anyway.
One thing just to add to that, so I mean, if you think about it, a lot of the time people are bringing in fill because they want to avoid any flood damage, whether that's from tidal influences during a storm event, or whether that's storm surge, or whether that is stormwater from rainfall, and ultimately, we want people to do that, right? We want people to get their homes elevated out of harm's way, so it's, it's an interesting question.
Right, and if they want, say they really wanted to get it up higher, and they brought all that fill, and they still gotta put that basin in there to hold all that water, and all that is gonna come, not only the house, but the sloping up to the house, so it's difficult, okay?
It may not, yeah, it may not be the amount of fill, it may be the grade on the fill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what this ordinance says is that regardless of whether you bring in fill or don't bring in fill, you've got to direct all the water from your roof and from your driveway into whatever basin you create, surface or subsurface. The other thing that I wanted to say about the comment about existing homes, and this is a very bureaucratic answer, and I don't like bureaucratic answers, but it's the correct answer, I think, in this case. In situations with existing homes where maybe I'm putting my water onto Mike's property, ultimately that becomes a civil matter between Mike and I, and I would hope Mike and I could figure it out together, and so Mike didn't get hurt, but if we couldn't, then it could go to court. So, and again, I don't like that answer, but that's probably the right answer.
Okay, the 1.5 inches, which is state, even across the board, we live in a low-lying area, you gotta account for erosion over time. Two point inches is, I think, a half inch is more than fair to implement, and as far as infringement, unless it's an obvious infringement, where, I'll give you an example, I built an in-ground pool in my backyard, I made sure that when they leveled the ground, I didn't infringe on my neighbors, because that's a responsible thing to do, and why would I want to have sitting water on my property or my neighbor's property, which will cause mosquitoes to come in, it's just gonna be a high score. So responsibility thing to do for every person would be to just use common judgment, but if it's an obvious infringement, then maybe you need code enforcement with current and existing and ones that may be coming in, but I think the two point inches, being we are in low-lying area and we do have erosion that happens that you cannot help, that's mother nature, is an out of question at all.
Yeah, I think one thing to keep in mind is that, generally speaking, most of the residential lots in Cape Carteret are pretty large, you know, many of them are 20,000 square feet or more, many of them are 15,000 square feet or more. You do have some smaller lots, particularly in the Bay Shore area, some in the old Cape Carteret area, it's a lot easier for someone to comply with the single-family requirement in Star Hill, for example, than it is maybe in Bay Shore, or some of the lots in old Cape Carteret. So that's an important thing to keep in mind, too. You've also got to make sure that you've got required separation from your septic system for whatever stormwater system you have in place, so, but it's very dual, whether it's 1.5 or 2, it can be achieved, it gets a little trickier on the smaller lots, and you gotta be creative, but I think it's achievable in any event.
It gets tricky on smaller lots, or bigger houses on bigger lots, because you gotta have a repair area for that septic, and you want to put that into the plan, too. One question I had, Frank, was the part where you weren't requiring a stormwater engineer to certify, that means the zoning officer's gonna say, yeah, you're holding the right amount of water. Is that, is that reasonable?
So in the case of the larger commercial or institutional or subdivision projects, the engineer is absolutely gonna be involved in every one of them.
Right.
The only instance where the engineer is not required is a single-family home. And so it's ultimately gonna be the town planner, code enforcement person, who's gonna have to enforce that, and inspect the site, and make sure that they've created whatever thousand cubic feet of storage, or whatever they needed to create. But it, but it's not, I guess I would say it's not rocket science, someone has to check it, check the dimensions, make sure that they've got the required storage area there, it can be done.
Yeah, I tried to get ahold of John Freshwater, who's done a lot of work for us over the years, he's out sick, so I didn't get up with him, and I wanted to see what be a range of costs that we would add to a single-family residential home, to have him certify, something like that, something from as simple as a little small retention basin, do something that might be more complicated, and, or even, maybe we could bring him to this meeting.
Yeah, I think, I don't think John's practicing, hasn't been practicing for several months, I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
We certainly could answer that question, or have another.
Have another one. You see?
Yeah, I know David Newsom, I'm not sure if he's practiced, Jonathan McDaniel is a good one as well.
He's not well or something?
I'm not sure, but I know he's not been practicing, because I tried to have him do some work for the town, and he's.
I didn't know that. Okay.
So Mike, anything about the state stormwater?
What's that?
So, going back to the state stormwater, the big developments.
Yes.
What do you think about the 1.5 versus the two?
Well, you know, I could easily go with two, because it doesn't cost much more to do two as opposed to one and a half, okay? Because you gotta dig the basin, so you dig it four inches deeper, okay? You know, a couple extra swipes of the bulldozer, or whatever, whatever it happens to be. It's expensive, because you have to do it in the first place, but it doesn't really make a difference between one and a half and two inches, or I wouldn't think that it would be, unless you put underground retention type systems, tanks, and that, that kind of stuff. That would get, get more expensive. So Frank, are you comfortable with, on the single-family residences, is saying, yeah, the capacity, the retention that you've got there is okay?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable judgment for a staff person to make, whether it's a town manager, or planner, code enforcement type person. I think we could probably handle that. It is definitely gonna require attention, and it really is gonna require this person, this position being filled, to make sure we enforce that.
Yeah, and, you know, a lot of these, they don't have elevations of the lot, and, you know, contour intervals on there.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's not so easy to do that, and that's what stormwater engineers do.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think that's a reasonable concern, I mean, I think, as I mentioned in the written memo, no ordinance is perfect, and so ultimately, you're just trying to make the best improvement that you can, and so if we miss something, or if something's not quite perfect, that's kind of the judgment that I'm making here, is that whatever effort we make is gonna be a nice improvement for the community. If you want to be closer to perfect, still won't be 100% perfect, but if you want to be closer to perfect, then you maybe should require the engineer to certify.
Yeah. Another question I had is, when we sloped the driveway away from the road, okay, why would a 12-inch culvert be required in that situation?
Yeah, good question. My thought was just to have the culvert in place, so that if the town constructs ditches in the future, and have that infrastructure in place, like I will tell you, for example, I had a meeting today with engineers who are designing stormwater improvements on Bog Sound Drive, and we've had some problems there in the past, we have a grant, we're hopefully gonna be going out to bid for some improvements there. And one of the significant cost estimates for that is gonna be removing the driveways, removing the existing undersized culverts, and installing new culverts in that area. And so in the future, it might just be helpful to have that in place. The town theoretically already requires that in our ordinances, and I shared with you, we basically apply that subjectively right now.
I'm sorry?
We apply it subjectively.
Yes.
We make a judgment if you, if we don't think you need it, we don't make you put it in. What I'm saying here, probably goes against my basic fiber, but what I'm saying here is, we're gonna require it regardless, just so that it's there in the future. You may not agree with that.
No, I don't disagree with it. In fact, when I did that, if they had a ditch, we required them to put that in, the 12-inch culvert.
That's, and we, and we apply that.
Right, but if they didn't, in, you know, the, the, say the lot was level, you know, the other thing that wasn't done in this town is, one of the very first things we ever learned in graphic science is, when you're building a road, you cut the ditches, and you calculate how much of a ditch you need to cut out to put up here to get the road higher, so it'll hold the amount of water that you want, and we've got a lot of situations where that isn't. That brings me to something else. If there is a functioning ditch on a roadway here in the town, would you want some of the water from the lot being going into that ditch, or are you gonna just consider that to be for the roadway?
Yeah, so again, keep in mind that the requirement would be for the water to be sloped, the driveway to be sloped back from the road.
Yeah.
Or maybe they'd have the grate at the end of the driveway, and so some of that water from the driveway is gonna get into the ditch. Theoretically, it's not gonna be a very large percentage, because you're gonna require the one and a half inch infiltration of everything else. The driveway's gonna have to be sloped to run the water into this surface or subsurface basin on the property, all the downspouts are gonna go in there. So theoretically, the vast majority of the water from the single-family home is staying on-site in the property. Is there a little bit that might get into the ditch for the road? Yes, probably so, I don't think it's gonna be a significant amount.
So what you're saying is the ditches are for the road?
Basically, yes.
Paxton has the data.
Well, we're getting off topic, I thought we were going around the room with the 1.5 to.
We keep jumping to the residential, yeah.
Change the subject, but I have very important, I agree with you.
Oh, I didn't know we were gonna go around three times, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the best subdivisions in Cape Carteret is Deer Creek, and for many reasons, but I had an engineer, and we very carefully planned for swale ditches, and for years, I've gone around to the various contractors building houses, and said, please, when you, and most of the lots are above the road in Deer Creek, and I have said, when you go around and build houses and put your driveways in, be sure to incorporate a dip in your driveway, the same elevation as the swale ditch, which has grates and empties ultimately into Bog Sound. So, that has kept that, and it would be ludicrous to put a culvert there, where we have swale ditches.
Well, that's right, and not all of the houses have that, but there are some that have that.
There's one that doesn't, he escaped me, but the rest of them have dips, and, and, I mean, I really hounded them for years, and it kept the roads nice for the most part. Now, some areas in Star Hill have literally filled in their ditches, and it just makes me furious. I actually saw a former town clerk directing a town maintenance man to fill in the ditch in front of her house, because she didn't like the looks of it. And, and people, forgive me, from cities, may not understand what country ditches do. And so yes, we should have culverts where we have ditches, but I would appeal to common sense and the design of subdivision, if we have swale ditches, to maintain them, either a dip or a grate, but certainly to accommodate existing stormwater features built into that subdivision.
Absolutely. That is the intent, if we need to make that clear, we can do that, but that's, certainly we need to do that.
Because that would apply to 12, 16, and 12, 17, the bullet point on page four, you know, the absolute mandate to put in 12-inch culvert, I think that would be a terrible thing to do.
Agreed, I don't think it makes sense, where you don't have ditches, all you're gonna do is put a culvert in and then bury it.
Yeah, well, if you have swale ditches, swale ditches that are mowed and maintained, and they do take the water from the road and from the driveways, and even the lots themselves.
You're not talking about like right next to the street, the ditch there, you're talking about the swales that go behind houses?
No, I'm talking about the swale right by the street.
Oh, okay.
If you drive around Deer Creek, you will see a nice ditch on both sides of the road that people mow, and, and the driveways, most of them dip.
How does that differ from a ditch?
It is a ditch, it's a swale ditch.
Okay.
That's the definition.
Let me make sure I'm, I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm understanding your concern, because I think we probably are trying for the same thing, but there may be a disconnect. You're saying, if there is an existing ditch, and maybe it's not very deep.
Exactly, it's a swale.
A swale, that you think just simply tilting the driveway back slightly to create the consistent flow across the top of the driveway is sufficient, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
Look, specifically is in Deer Creek, the road is lower than the homes, so there's no way you can tilt the driveway back, the driveway is gonna run to the road, but if, when it does, then it goes into the ditch, and the ditch ultimately goes around the corner, and into a grate, and through a pipe, and into the sound. That's the drainage for that whole subdivision.
Fair enough, and we can massage, I think, the requirement that it be tilted back, but for example, in an application like that, maybe you would have the driveway grate there, that would catch the water before it gets to the street, and it would shoot it into the ditch, or the swale, or what have you, so, do you follow what I'm saying?
Because it's.
What she's saying is it does the same thing as having a culvert under there, because it's actually, you know, with a hot sports car, you probably wouldn't want to go down that, it is pretty steep, and the water runs across it, and runs horizontally down the street.
I understand that, and that makes total sense, but what I thought I heard you saying is that there's an existing swale or ditch there, right? And that it's not possible to tilt the driveway back, because the lot is higher than the street.
That's correct.
So in that case, you might run the water off the sides of the driveway into your existing swale, or you might run it through some sort of grate at the end of the driveway to.
Could you do a grate or culvert? I don't know. I'm gonna engineer, so I don't know.
If you just dip the driveway, that is.
It takes care of it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so, well, I mean, again, and I apologize if I'm being dense, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, and can help get it the way that you all want it to be. You're saying that it's not a question of, do you have to tilt the driveway back, it's a question of, do you need the culvert?
Explain to me what tilt the driveway back means.
You know, so for example, if the road surface is here, right, and the house is here, that's, you know, quite distance back from the house.
Okay.
The driveway would just go back, and maybe it would fall six inches or so over the course of 10 feet or so, and it would go back up to get back into the person's driveway or garage, or what have you, which is common, you see that in a lot of places in Cape Carteret, that the driveway just simply is constructed with that dip there, so that the water doesn't flow out into the street, and maybe so it can continue to flow through the swale.
What I'm trying to say is, you've got, in Deer Creek, you've got swale ditches that can easily be mowed on both sides of the street, the street is crowned, so that the water flows off sides into the swales. Now, your driveway coming out of the house comes like this, and if it, if it, if the driveway just dips enough so that it enters the swale, that's all I'm saying.
I think you're saying that.
Yeah, so you're saying in that, in that situation, the culvert is not necessary.
Right.
That's your basic.
Right, right. As long as you maintain the smart entrance to the swale. Right, right. As long as you maintain the, the smart entrance to the swale, which you can see in most cases.
So Deer Creek may be, as you described, but in a situation where there is no swale or ditch currently existing.
Yes.
Um, and you have the same situation where the driveway and the house is sitting up higher, the driveway just going straight back. What do you think is the appropriate strategy for that situation?
Well, the town really needs to go into the ditch business wholesale, really, really, for drainage of water.
And so that was the intent behind the automatic culvert requirement is that if and when the town does go into the ditch business wholesale and builds new ditches through some of these neighborhoods, you don't got to rip up the person's driveway.
That makes sense.
Right.
So that was the thought behind.
Have no objection to that, but there are situations where that would just mess up existing working stormwater swales.
So it couldn't be across the board, and you have to have kind of some options for people to choose from.
I, I think we could probably, we could probably craft the language such that it requires an appropriately sized mechanism to convey the water across the drive, either across the driveway or under the driveway, whether that's a culvert or whether that's some sort of sculpted driveway.
Or, yeah, or to the ditch.
Yeah, what we did at Star Hill North.
New homes, yes. But what I think, I think Pax is saying is that there's already ditches in place in front of a lot of the vacant lots there.
Right.
Swales.
And two new, two new houses going up right this minute. Now, here's another question. The, the house that's been staked and hasn't even been started, are these stormwater rules going to apply after they've received their building permits and so forth?
I'm sorry, Pax, and I was writing a note and I didn't hear the beginning. I'm sorry. What was?
There are two houses being constructed in Deer Creek right now. One's almost finished. One has just been staked. Assuming this is thrashed out and passed in the next 60 days, say. Even though these homes have already received building permits and I assume zoning permits, would they be required?
They would not be required to meet this. It would be.
Nothing under construction at this time would be required to meet this.
Nothing that's permitted under the old system.
I see.
That's correct. Yeah, so what, what I would envision is when the person submits their site plan and their application for a zoning permit, we would be checking the stormwater plan at that time, and it would apply going forward, but those would not be subject to this.
I'll visit him. I'll visit him.
Okay, and then, um, so I don't know how you want to do this, Frank, if you want to have us do a motion for kind of each section or a motion, like having, once we kind of get it all worked out, then one motion for everything.
I'll tell you.
Obviously, we're not voting yet. I just want to clarify what he wants.
Well, I'm going to tell you what, I would like the tableists to have more time to drive around and look at every one of the neighborhoods to see what we've got, to see what the impact of this thing is. This, this, uh, I'll be honest with you, it overwhelmed me to, to say, huh, I would be thinking of Deer Creek, and I'd be thinking of, oh, Cape Carteret and, and all the places there, and I didn't take time to, didn't have time to, to drive around and look at all these things and kind of wrap my head around exactly what we're doing.
And I'm, you all should take as much time as you think is, is helpful or necessary.
Okay.
Happy to oblige that.
Yeah, the residential is going to be the hardest.
What's that?
I said, I think the residential part is going to be the hardest.
Oh, yes.
And that's why I was trying to get those easy ones out of the way if we could agree on the commercial stuff.
The commercial isn't, uh, is not nearly as much as an issue as the individual residents. Especially, especially when you get on the 13, five lots over here, which I don't know how many there's left over there.
Not many.
Yeah, they, that thing just.
Yours.
Are we still on the difference between 1.5 and 2.0?
Yes. And so, and my question for you, because it's two now, right? So have you had a lot of backlash when you, when someone gets their state permit and they're like, oh, these, these two things don't match? Has there been a lot of backlash?
So truthfully, there have not been any projects that required a state stormwater permit since I've been here, uh, since last June or so. So I don't know what reaction was. Probably, maybe somebody, maybe some of you all know. I don't know.
Weren't there a couple of, uh, concerns about, uh, houses recently built in Arden Oaks that required stormwater, uh, facilities?
Um, yeah, those were not subject to the, the two-inch requirement that we're talking about here that goes above and beyond the state stormwater requirements. That's a great example, though, of where the town manager essentially made those properties put in other stormwater features. And so at one point, they talked about doing a surface basin. I think they ultimately switched it to some subsurface basins there, and that generated some angst. And whether you think it's valid or not, that property owner's logical question was, well, why do I have to do this and spend this money when none of these other people had to either? So I'm, I'm trying to correct that concern. It came up in another situation on Live Oak Drive. Um, and so again, whatever we decide the standard is, I just want to make sure we're being consistent with everybody.
Um, when, assuming we had a new residential subdivision, which would likely be inside the triangle, would you, the developer, they lay out the lots, and you require the developer to, to manage to the ordinance for the roadways and everything that's in there, and then the individual lots would come under the residential portion of that, whenever that is? Is that, is that how you're seeing that?
Um, potentially. Uh, it, it depends. I mean, there are some residential subdivisions that may go so far as to design, to design the future build-out of all of the single-family homes in the subdivision, in which case that might be covered by the entire, that would most likely be a state stormwater permit in that situation. Uh, or if not, then we would apply the residential requirements as those individual lots were developed. This is written.
They might go ahead and foresee that and put an area, you know, a perfect, perfect one for having done that correctly would have been Arden Oaks, because they had that big area that could have, uh, held all the water feature that individual houses had done some of that, and they wouldn't have the problem we have today.
But what happened?
Yeah.
But what happened there?
What do you mean, what happened? Well, but so, one, one, yeah, one, one thing to keep in mind. So in Arden Oaks, my understanding is that they simply had a low-density permit, and so all of the homes had to stay under the 25% impervious coverage requirement. They have a common area for stormwater there at the front, but I don't know that there was necessarily anything that contemplated this house is going to have 2,000 square feet or 4,000.
No, no, what I'm saying is with that, that's an example where a contractor may put in the central area, but if you had each of the residential lots doing what you're proposing in here, it never would have been a problem, is what I'm saying. It may not have been a problem.
Say that. I'm so sorry. I didn't.
They put that central area in Arden Oaks, uh, to the right, just as you turn into the subdivision. It helps, holds quite a bit of water, but it wasn't enough. But what I'm saying is that might be something that a contractor would do when they put in the subdivision. Then if the individual lots are held to the standards you put in there, that, that, Arden Oaks may have never been a problem, is what I'm saying, you know, if, if you did both, both things.
Well, the, the only thing I would say about Arden Oaks is I, I'm pretty sure where you had, where the community had the problems in Arden Oaks, those were massive rainfall events.
Oh, yeah.
That, that system in Arden Oaks, I think, easily accommodates a 1.5-inch or a 2-inch rainfall event pretty regularly. Where we had the problems, it was those massive storms, hurricane-type rainfall events, and the water just had nowhere to go, because it's like a bathtub at the front end of there. So, um, and, and, and I, none of those homes were required with the state stormwater permit to have any special stormwater requirements. Um, essentially, they've got the low-density option. They're restricted on the amount of impervious coverage they can have in there, so.
But that's a, that's an interesting situation, and Frank has done a splendid job to solve future problems for Arden Oaks.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's got it nailed, so.
We hope so.
And that it's wonderful that the town can rescue a whole subdivision.
Well, on that note, did anyone have any input on the commercial, industrial, and two institutional or residential subdivision requirement of two inches? And this would be designed by an engineer.
Are you talking about on 12.16 or?
This is the, in the new part that Frank proposes on page two.
Page one.
Of the two of his, um, memo. So page seven, I believe, in the packet.
It's on the se, the second page of the ordinance, uh, the actual ordinance itself.
Oh, okay.
I believe you're referring to B2, I think.
Right.
No, excuse me, I'm mistaken. B1, really. So A is the state permit, and that's where we require the two inches and a minimum of two inches or whatever the state requires, whatever's greater. B1 and 2, that's the requirement for smaller projects that don't require a state stormwater permit, but we have the two-inch requirement in there as well. Is that, is that what you're referring to?
He wants to go there in the beginning.
Sure, if you have anything else to add for that, that particular section. Okay.
And that section I've written down, I think 1.5 is enough.
Okay. Similar to the state stormwater. Okay. Yeah, I'm kind of torn on that. Yeah, it, it's tricky, because obviously we have, you know, more issues with stormwater here, but if it's the state requirement, so we haven't had any backlash, kind of. Yeah.
Based on the entire state, as he stated, is it good for the mountains or is it good for the coast?
Right, I see what you're saying.
I think 2.0 is not out of the question to have a little half of inch.
Yeah.
Why not save time in the future by doing it now?
Mm-hmm. And that's what we've been at.
Because you're not going to stop erosion. You're not going to stop mother nature, so why give it more to erode when you can help be a little preventative?
Mm-hmm.
My thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm okay with keeping it the same for the state stormwater and the two inches for the smaller, but bigger developments.
Yeah, true.
So I think what, what I'm hearing from the group is Pax is expressing an interest in making it 1.5, but it sounds like the rest of the group is comfortable with the two. Is that?
I'm 1.5.
1.5, okay, so.
And, and 1.5 for residential, but two for commercial? Is that what you said?
Residential, I, I'm not sure. Um, I had spoken with a builder friend of mine, and, you know, a lot of concerns about the basin idea and cutting into septic and just having the smaller lots that are left in town, just having enough room to make all that happen and make it functional, you know, having little children, I don't want a giant ditch in my yard, you know? Um, so, yeah, I'm not sure I'm, I'm in on, sold on the basin idea quite yet. It, it sounds, you know, great like we're talking about environmentally friendly, which I had brought up at another meeting. I just don't know that that is quite the solution I was thinking of, um, or, or imagining. I don't know if that makes sense. Just, yeah, from his, his, he, um, mentioned he had, um, built a couple of houses recently, and one of them did require a big swale, and that was about $6,000, as opposed to maybe gutters that could cost $2,000. So I was surprised at the cost. I would like to see some other, um, cost estimates for, um, a, a basin like that in a residential area.
So, so the swale, uh, an above-ground swale costs $6,000?
To hire the engineer to do it.
Oh, to hire the engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, I, the intent, and again, there may be some examples where it may be, it doesn't work the way, but the intent is to keep it affordable and easy on the single-family homes.
Yeah.
And do it as part of the landscaping and the grading of the lot and so forth. But I certainly don't have any intent to require someone to spend $6,000 on. That's not the intent.
I know, yeah.
That's correct.
Is the only alternative to the basin and underground infiltration system? Is that the only alternative that we know of?
Essentially.
Okay. Now you're getting into money when you do that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well.
I love that.
North Carolina Coastal Federation.
Yeah, they're good.
Great group, great brochure, good information, rain gardens. I would hope that we would all study this during the next month.
And, and so for example, on, under the scenario for the single-family home and the one and a half inches creating the basin, uh, it may, ideally, it would be a rain garden.
Right.
That's really, so it's, a rain garden is basically this basin with lots of cool plants in it that'll soak up the water.
Right.
So, but it, but the way this is written, it doesn't have to be that. It could just be the sod and the yard, but I would prefer it to something that looks nice.
Well, and certainly not like the Baptists and the Presbyterian churches. That looks awful to me.
The big one up here?
Yeah.
Just nasty. It's unkempt. It's, it's, it's awful. If I had had any idea, Bill Brogdon and I cleaned out the Presbyterian church pond one time after somebody was foolishly allowed to put in water hyacinths.
Water what?
Hyacinth.
Like a flower?
And they took over to the extent that the Presbyterians were worried that a child would fall in and drown because she couldn't get out.
Couldn't see it, couldn't get to it.
Couldn't get out. Anyway, when that, when that, uh, when the dam burst, you know, if I'd had any idea, the $500,000 the Coastal Federation would spend and have the dam blow out, and then the lengthy time for the Department of Transportation to take it over and do something, I would have, I would have tried to go in there and fix the dam and dig out the pond, because it was beautiful. They're beautiful little ponds, and they were stormwater ponds.
Right, right.
They were, they were dug years ago by my father, and they drained the shopping center. You know, oh, it just breaks my heart.
What breaks my heart is seeing a, one of these basins.
Yeah.
With a chain link fence around it. I cannot stand that.
And trash.
Oh, it, it just blows in there and stays.
Yes. Yes, I've heard that before, but anyway.
Yeah, so along those lines, let me just clarify, I, I absolutely 100% agree with your pattern.
I'm glad you do.
But when it's the state stormwater requirements, they're probably going to require that fence when you get into the retention ponds. With the kinds of basins that we're talking about here for a single-family home, we would not anticipate anything like a fence, or just so you're clear on.
Thank you.
But the state probably would require fences.
50-foot by 10 in every yard. Well, let me ask you another question. Um, for, we have about, I think I counted them, maybe 175 waterfront properties on bog sounds or canal, and, uh, and most of them, uh, well, if it really rains, it ends up in the canal, you know, it just. That's why I need to, I need to go out and look at this stuff. I, I need to have this table so I can get a, get a handle on this, uh, because, um, like my house is on a canal, and it slopes towards the canal. But when I bought the house, the house was set, and there was no gutters on it, and there was standing water underneath the house. So I just put gutters on it, piped the, it out, and it eventually, most of it ends up going into the canal back at the house. And that's what happens on most of the houses that are on canals or waterfront.
Make the motion.
Pardon?
Make the motion.
To table.
Oh, well.
Absolutely. You don't have to make, you can make a motion anyway. You don't have to. I'm not going to take it any further until I bring it back to y'all. But, but it is helpful to hear your discussion and to get a sense of what's important, because what I will do is I'll take that feedback, and I'll make some tweaks so that the next time I bring it back to you, maybe it'll be more to your liking, at least on some of the points that were raised, so. But I'm not going to go forward with it until I bring it back to you guys to look at it.
Okay, well, if you want a motion, I, I'm, I'm willing to do that, but I just, I really should have had this thing two weeks ago. You know, and I, when I got in, oh, I'm not prepared tonight.
Perfectly fine. Uh, but one thing that I would say, so I think the concern about a waterfront property is a reasonable concern, right? Like the water's running right into the canal, and it's out of, out of pocket, out of mind. You're done, good, we're good to go. And so, I mean, there are, there's one school of thought where you would say that's appropriate, and maybe that satisfies the 1.5-inch requirement pretty darn easily, right? So like clearly, there's enough capacity in that canal for 1.5 inches of rain coming off of everybody's property, right? Could be too, that if you have a wetland on your property, that maybe that's sufficient size to dump the water into that as opposed to creating a new basin on top or a subsurface. Could be too that if you have a wetland on your property, that maybe that's sufficient size to dump the water into that as opposed to creating a new basin on top or a subsurface. Easy easy flow, French drain type system or something like that. So I think those are good points for you all to consider. On the flip side, the environmental community typically doesn't want any water sheet flowing into the canals or the sounds or the wetlands.
Absolutely.
And so if you're infiltrating it on site, then you're not sheeting it into the canals. On the flip side, I would argue that if all it's doing is flowing across your grass and into the canal, it's probably not damaging that canal.
That's right, that's right.
I'm just trying to give you a flavor of the the different sides of the discussion that I've heard over the years.
That's appreciated.
Okay, so just in kind of recapping, I think, you know, we're kind of divided on the two versus the 1.5 for the the bigger developments. And then for the residential, just some of the things that have come up, yeah, looking at at the cost of what what that would be. Maybe a visual would be helpful to kind of see what that would look like or what are examples, obviously, the rain garden is is one of them. And I mentioned the, you know, the smaller lots, I feel like that would be kind of tricky with the septic. So maybe there's a reasonable lot size that we need to consider for for that, looking at the lots that are left. And then, as Paxton mentioned, kind of those exceptions and variations where we have different things in different neighborhoods and we really need to not just put a, you know, a covert everywhere, maybe, to sort of make sure that system that's in place is working. So having those exceptions taken a look at. And we can all, like Mike said, drive around and look at what a pipe may look like everywhere and if it really makes sense or if it doesn't. I'm trying to think, oh, and sort of thinking along those lines of the the basin. You know, my my thought is, you know, what if there's like a tree, right? So you've got the house and then their septic system has to go in the back, so the basin has to go in the front, but there's trees there. It's like, well, the trees are probably soaking up more water than a basin would, so how do you kind of, I don't know, how do you work through that?
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, we would have to have somebody tell us what trees do, what.
Yeah.
Trees soak up water.
Oh, they do, but, you know, when you get to septic systems, it's a double edged sword. Those little tendrils of rooms get into the grow into the holes that are in the perforated pipe pretty soon.
Oh, I wasn't thinking trees, I was thinking trees instead of basins.
Right.
Right.
The tree beams.
Yeah.
Trees what soak up the water, so.
Yeah.
And and the practical, that's a great point, the the practical result of that is that maybe in that particular case, the person decides to put the basin somewhere else, maybe they don't have room. So then maybe they decide to use some underground subsurface feature, you know, some sort of French drain type feature or easy flow as one of the commercially available products or maybe some sort of sock pipe or septic system type pipe. And so those are the trade offs that come in, obviously, those are more expensive than just sculpting your landscaping your yard appropriately. But great, great thoughts.
Would there be any?
I was going to say, just thinking about my house, I have a pool in the back, which is kind of, you know, raised up and then the there's a lower level in my backyard, but that's where the septic system is on the left side. And then the rest is the play area, so I wouldn't really want a big divot in that area. And in the front yard, I've got about 20 pine trees, same thing on the side, it's 10 pine trees. So it's like, why would I want the tree over a ditch?
Right.
So I would have to do something like you're saying that's more expensive to put underground.
All my gutters I took, I had the landscaper put in high underground pipes and the water just flowed up and it just eventually just dissipates all throughout the yard. You don't even see it, you don't even know it.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts that maybe are helpful to you as you think about it between now and the next meeting. Number one, it's perfectly fine if your ultimate judgment is that you don't want to impose any additional requirements on the single family lots. So that would be, that's been the town's policy up to this point, that's a reasonable policy to keep in place going forward. So that's clearly an option for you. Another option that you may want to consider is maybe exempting the person from that one and a half inch stormwater plan requirement for a single family home. If they keep the impervious coverage on the lot below some certain percentage, whatever you think is reasonable. You know, if it's a 20,000 square foot lot, chances are they're not going over 25% impervious coverage anyway, and they've got plenty of room for that water to spread out on the yard like Don mentioned. So that's something you all may want to think about as well. And I think another option you may want to think about is maybe you don't require the single family homes to do anything other than kind of the common sense driveway culverts, sloping the driveway back, whatever. But maybe if they bring in more than two feet of fill or one foot of fill or whatever you think the right number is, then they have to come up with a plan and maybe it's an engineer designed in the plan. But if you're not bringing in fill dirt, maybe you're you're good to go and you just have to do the simple driveway things we've talked about. So just a couple of ideas for you to think about, so.
I'm seeing here, you said for a new residential, 4,000 square feet of impervious coverage, for example, are you saying that would be under new construction, that would be the threshold?
Well, they could. It it could be really whatever number you think is right, but in the example I gave, most of the lots in Star.
It's under this amount. Be where you are and if you're building on this, then you should be.
Yeah, they ultimately it's a policy judgment by this board and ultimately the Board of Commissioners, but for example, in Star Hill, those lots are 20,000 square feet plus. At 25% impervious coverage is going to be 5,000 square feet, even some of the larger homes, I doubt they have 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage. And so, but if you do 25% on a lot in Bayshore that maybe is only 8,000 square feet, for example, I mean, that's that's 2,000 square feet. They might be able to stay below that a lot harder, obviously, so, but it's also harder for them to fit the stormwater feature on that lot with their septic system and so forth. So it gets. It all sort of conspires together sometimes to achieve the desired result that you want.
And some of those Bayshore lots are usable.
That's right.
At 50 by 150, that's 7,500 square feet. As long as they can get a septic permit and abide by the setbacks and haven't owned it since 74.
The other thing that I would say to you, and maybe you've experienced this in your time in Cape Carteret or in your adult life and owning a home. Stormwater is probably the thing that makes people the most agitated. Honestly, over the course of my nearly 30 year career in local government, dealing with stormwater concerns are among the most frustrating, most stressful residents get the most upset about. And sometimes they have legitimate concerns, other times they maybe just perceive that they have legitimate concerns, but it gets very emotional and nobody wants water in their house or in their yard. So I I don't know why I'm sharing that with you, but I'm sharing that with you.
Do you have any experience from your time in Emerald Isle where you required engineered stormwater work for individual lots of of what those cost?
Yeah, gosh, you know, keep in mind, I've, you know, been gone from there for four and a half years or so now, but it it was a significant additional cost. I mean, and costs of everything have increased at time, but, you know, I think they were easily several hundred dollars, some of them were several thousand dollars, depending on how involved it was, so. It's all relative, right?
Yeah, you know, think about it, if we had new subdivisions, we could do like we did up in Star Hill North where the road is higher than everything else and use the boundary line between the lots as the swale that takes the water away. But most of the stuff that we're talking about here is individual lots that are in existing subdivisions and have been developed yet.
Yeah, that's what it's hard.
So.
Okay, anything else on that before we move on? Okay, so it looks like the next planning board meeting, and I'm, we're going to be discussing this again, is April 18th, so the third Tuesday. And then Frank, do you have anything else for us?
Yeah, just a a couple of things briefly, I I will absolutely bring this back to you for consideration on April 18th and I'll try to incorporate some of the comments that I heard tonight and if y'all are comfortable with that, great, if not, we'll keep working on it and keep tweaking it. Don, welcome to the planning board, good to have you here and enjoyed talking with you last week about the role. If there's anything that I or Barbara or any of us can do to be helpful, please let us know. I talked a little bit earlier, the town planner code enforcement position, that advertisement is out in several professional publications in North Carolina, it's on the town website. I established a deadline of April 17th for the, it's open till filled, but April 17th is the first review of applications. If you know someone who's interested, please ask them to check it out or give me a call or give Heather Lefangwell a call and be happy to talk to them. There's one vacancy on the planning board coming up in May for Chair Hall's seat. And so we'll be asking the Board of Commissioners to appoint someone to that at their May meeting. We'll start advertising very soon for people interested in that position going forward. The only other thing I had on my list was you all talked about trees at the January meeting and also I think at the December meeting. I didn't put anything on the agenda tonight because there didn't seem to be any consensus of which direction to go. And so I'm not going to put it on the agenda again until you all tell me to do that, so that's why it's not.
Thank you. Um, I did want to mention, we we also discussed the Parks and Rec Committee at the last meeting, and I think most everyone knows, but there is going to be a Parks and Rec Committee meeting now, I think it's the 28th of this month, so we're going to get started with that.
It's next Tuesday.
And for those who weren't at the meeting, Frank, do you want to name the members that were selected for those who weren't at the town board meeting?
Um, I would.
Sort of put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
I would be happy to if I had a list in front of me right now, but I don't remember all of the names. There are two planning board members on it and the right various representatives from Star Hill North and Star Hill and some other communities, so, sorry.
I didn't read my list either.
Yeah, I have a couple people. Some of the emails I don't know for sure, but definitely Neil and myself, Rachel Lucas, Lauren Nelson, Amy Myers, who I think is Star Hill North. I don't know this TM Kapanski, not sure what their name is, and a Mr. Cassidy. Okay. So we're excited to get that started and Commissioner Watts will be in charge of that.
Cool.
So, yeah, okay, yes, we can go around counterclockwise again.
All right, this is my request from last month. I really believe that the town of Cape Carteret needs to know for its permanent records where the septic systems are. Particularly in the commercial area for those businesses that are not on sewer plant. Starbucks. We need to see on a map where they pump their affluent to their septic system and drain fields so that we will know where that is and not and and be aware of. Wells Fargo, they pump their affluent behind the shopping center also. The Lowe's Gas Canopy. The Lowe's Home Improvement pumps their affluent to a septic tank and drain field behind the Real Lowe Drugstore. Now, I know these things, but the town should know them and map them. And I would hope that this board and Frank would would be involved in that project to locate for permanent records those systems.
Yeah, and agreed, and we're working on that, and so we'll certainly incorporate the private septic or the. The individual onsite wastewater septic systems.
And and it wouldn't hurt to have easements to the sewer plant also. I mean, that could prove very valuable to know.
Absolutely.
Where where they are, and I'll contribute any information that I have to this effort and to the town.
Yeah, it's important for.
Yeah.
Future development too, I mean, because I think it was the bank that was like, they didn't know where the old one was under the parking lot, right? And so.
It's not under their parking lot, it goes behind the.
Right, so they didn't even know where it was.
And when Marine Federal paved their parking lot, I said, what are you doing? And they said, oh, we've had so many complaints about lack of park, and I said, you just paved over your septic system. No, we're on sewer, we've always been on sewer, and I said, well, maybe in Jacksonville, but the Health Department has never done a thing about that.
They actually, all those locations of those systems are on the permits in the Health Department.
Of course, but the town knows nothing about it.
No, but it's easy to get those permits.
Well, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, it would be good to have just kind of a central record of it for us, for general purposes. I I my understanding on the Wells Fargo building is that it there's an individual septic system on site between there and the gas station. I was not aware that there was anything pumped elsewhere there.
I may have misspoken on that.
Okay.
At one point, they were they were pumping and I'll have to look into that.
Okay, that's, I was just kidding, I've been dealing with them on an issue, so.
But I know the Walgreens goes behind the shopping center.
Anything else, Paxton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Neil?
Just one question, speaking of records and the like, does the town have a GIS? Database that they put all their plot plans and septic plans and all these plans into, or is it just maintained on paper? So the answer is there's no GIS database of all of those things. There is a mapping program where new permits are placed on there to educate the public about, for example, there's a residential, single family home permit on Dolphin Street or whatever the case may be, or a sign permit or whatever's going on. But there's nothing like you were talking about. We could work toward that in the future, it's probably beyond our technological capabilities right now, but we're hoping to improve the technological capabilities over time, so.
I I'm not a GIS guy, but I'm a technology guy, so I can help just listen and buy some things if y'all would like to ask me, I'm happy to. Nothing further. Need some help on email?
Thank you, Neil. Mike, you have anything for us?
No, no.
Okay.
Taking it all in.
Okay, well, yes, glad you're here. Okay, well, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion second. Okay, all in favor?
Adjourned.
Thank you all.
Not bad.
Yeah, our town, that's good for us.
Totally.
Thank you for chair of the meeting.
Yeah, one one thing too, I meant to say this during my comments, just so you know, the the board has a framed proclamation thanking Bruce for his service on the planning board and I, we delivered that to him, I think, one day last week. And we're certainly planning to do something similar for Chair Hall. Oh, my God. I wrote Susan and it was Bruce's, so let me, no, I'm sorry.